Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Did we have any more? I think we were done with budget review. So we can go back to the first item. A is a letter of commitment for the Smart Growth America application. And I think Commissioner Gamble has some -- something?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think the words "smart growth," I think as a community, we want to be smart in what we do, however you want to term that terminology. However, and I've said this, as many boards as you're privileged to sit on as a commissioner, you recognize that money is an attractor. And I've always tried to encourage that even though the money is there and it appears to be free money, we just have to meet the requirements. You need to know what the carrot is connected to. And while making our community a community that is attractive and we've got places for bicyclists and walking, things like that, I am opposed to bringing an outside entity in to advise us on how we should develop our community. I think that we need to be in the position of controlling that direction and not having that direction defined by an outside entity absent the ability for people to vote on it. And that's why this might look very attractive, but I am opposed to it. And I don't think it's in our best interest. And there's much that could be said, but I'll just leave it at that.
Question?
I have two questions. One, who wrote this letter? You did? Okay.
This is on the back.
Okay. It's not there. Seems like us were the wild fluctuations and infrastructure need due to a tourism-based economy and seasonal population, or to place it by a maximization, the benefit of broadband, something like that. But the entity that they're planning on coming in, correct me if I'm wrong, would be ARDC and Andy Hubley would be basically facilitating the meeting.
And I thought we already agreed to this. We just needed to approve the format of the letter.
Didn't we already take a vote on that? Did you vote in favor of it?
At the time, I am sure if you look back that I, you know, some of this is innocent enough. Then looking at the letter and then just researching it, I'm not opposed to some of the components of it. I just don't, I'm concerned about outside entities coming in and determining directions independent of the voice of the voter. And smart growth has a tendency to do that.
Well, they're facilitating with these different entities. They're not coming in and telling us what to do and running the show.
Well, and I would agree, as I mentioned, you know, sitting on many boards, that what happens is the language you'll hear is that there's consensus building and there's this "you," meaning the public, you've defined it. We're not telling you what to do. You're telling us. But they are facilitating a process that ends up having you tell them what they want you to do. And that's why, you know, if we're talking about, you know, like pass and active living and things like that, I have no problem with that. But I do have some issues with smart growth as its intention and its influence coming through the EPA and other things that tend to be restrictive to small communities like ours. So I'd say it's a big issue, but that's, and it seems innocent enough, but I have concerns with it.
Sure. I'm kind of along the lines with Bruce on taking out wild fluctuations in some of the wording in here. Otherwise, I think that, you know, if we just had Moran change those wordings, if you're okay with it, signing it.
Well, I do take a little issue to what Gary is saying. I believe that that is how they do it. So I have some concerns also. I know it's a great organization and we've been working with them. I'm not in favor of doing it either. So, but we did vote on it, so I don't know where you want to go with that.
That was my question. If we've already voted and approved it, what do we do, Brady?
Have to take a vote on to.
So we'd have to make a motion to unapprove our approval?
You, I'd have to go back and look at the actual motion.
Well, you know.
I think it was a general.
I don't have a sheet. Go ahead.
Question. I do have one concern, and that is, you know, most of the work can be really dealing with, you know, complete streets for the city of Grand Marais that include townships. I've already identified the issue in the town planning that all three townships did with Tim Nelson, I forget, five, six years ago. Looks actually as zoning overlay. These issues are addressed, but it's really Highway 61 that you get the pedestrian bike traffic. So it's really working with MINDA and not the county. And I don't think there's much participation, if at all from the West End. They'd be spending a lot of the time dealing with the, you know, Grand Marais, smart growth there.
Well, I just have one thing that we kind of look at because it is talking about the land use and the future growth. And if we start having groups come in that are promoting more restrictions and more rules and regulations on how we use our land, how we hunt, how we fish, you know, we have to be careful how strong the environmental, we're all environmentally, have environmental safe, I think. I mean, the county people really, really focused on that. And sometimes it doesn't, it doesn't even get addressed. And so I think we need to be careful about letting in environmental groups that want the EPA and restrictions because on top of all that, we are going to be looking at, they are working with large water sheds. And that is going to bring all kinds of rules and regulations. We're not going to be able to water the grass at certain times. I mean, it sounds really petty right now, but it can become a very big issue. And if you think you're restricted now, we're going to get done with the watersheds. It's going to be very scary. So I'm really kind of concerned myself. So, yes, Heidi?
This is for one workshop.
I understand that. And we can't control that. I mean, it's not like we have to jump into what they're.
Just this discussion seems like we're saying these people are going to come in and take over and tell us what to do. And it's a workshop.
Yeah. Here.
All I would say is that the letter says that this letter is a supportive commitment to Cook County's application to receive technical assistance from Smart Growth America. That's all I need to hear in that regard.
We didn't finish the paragraph. The end of the paragraph says it completes streets workshop.
That's right, but.
If you want to take out sections of the paragraph, fine.
I just, I'm just not, I am not comfortable as a representative of people in my district that we establish a relationship with Smart Growth America. And that is because I do not want land use control regulation and confiscation under the guise of environmental protection. And it is a beginning, but if you look at the agenda overall, we start someplace and we, we can make those decisions as to what we want to accomplish with creating, you know, friendly roads and things like that. But we need to maintain control. And we don't want to have, as I said before, outside entities advising us apart from any voter's ability to have a say in it. And that's not to say that you can look at watershed, you can look at all these different things. You can look at links habitat, you can look at all, all of these things are basically using environmentalism to be restrictive. We've got a farm on the hill. We've got a farm that is growing, you know, out of, west of here. And the restrictive nature of what's happening in our ability to do things is problematic. And because I see smart growth, that's a red flag to me. I'm not opposed to us determining what we want to do, but I do not want to allow their foot in the door. That's basically what I'm saying.
Well, I think if they want to rewrite that, that they would be focusing only on finishing the progress of the streets.
Question. If we, if no action on this letter, can Sattooth Mountain Clinic Moving Matters move forward with the workshop? I think the answer is yes, right?
No. It says Tim Nelson may be brought in. We are working on a deadline of December 6.
They're working on a deadline, right? But we're not going to be the applicant.
No, they are the applicant, but we may have a signature by the board chair on our letter of support.
Yeah, the letter of support, it can still move forward.
We can ask Tim if he can come in and give us the information we're missing.
Okay, does this happen? Can I? Do I have to grab him now? Yeah, he's probably gone for lunch, but I'll be right back.
Thank you. If you asked me, Dave Betts would have better Chris than if that's true more with, you know, street improvements.
I agree, I think you're talking about.
That he really didn't have anything to do with using Grand Marais.
Well, you know, yeah, I think Tim is a good one, you know. I mean, with this watershed project that the Southern Water are working on, and they're looking in the future to regulating your wells.
Yeah.
So you can't use your water how you want to use it. It's going to have a regulator on. That's just one little bit. And lower beneath us, everybody is drying up. So they want the Blue Lakes.
The way, the way I understand this workshop is only dealing with one component of what Smart Growth America deals with. They're not dealing with, you know, the wetland watershed issues, whatever. They're only dealing with complete streets component, even though they do have their trained personnel doing that.
Okay. Ask your question.
Kind of to summarize what you missed is that there's some confusion amongst the board that this letter of support means that we're going to allow Smart Growth America to come in and tell us what to do. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable in association with Smart Growth America. I think the intent of what we want to look at, I think anything that we can do internally as a community, where we have the community defining that and not a selective few that reads a consensus without voter participation in how we proceed. And that, you know, on multiple levels, I see how we use environmentalism and these ideas and things basically to drive agendas. And so I'm uncomfortable with an alliance with smart growth. That's, that's my position. I'm not saying that what we hope for, that if we could do that internally and conduct this and learn without, without the relationship, which I think in the ultimate is not in the best interest of our community, that's what I would like to see. So I'm not, I'm not in support of a letter that puts us in relationship with smart growth.
I kind of felt that this was just a workshop and that we weren't forming any alliance with anybody. So could you clarify a little bit?
Yes, I, I agree with Commissioner Gamble in the fact that I also don't want to hand over our planning process, be it the comp plan process or any, any other process over to the smart growth kind of initiatives. It was, it has been my understanding and through my discussions with Kristen and with Moran, who have been spearheading this, we sat down and discussed this, that this is indeed only intended to be just a workshop that would be over the period of two days. One would be, one day would be kind of an internal workshop that would work with decision makers from the county and perhaps city level to look at issues. And then the next day would be for a public forum, a workshop to address, kind of bringing in together the GO team and the complete streets portion of it. And yes, there'll be some flavor of the smart growth, but I made it kind of perfectly clear in order to get my support, it would have to be kind of a peripheral discussion as something that we might use to glean information from for our comp plan, but that not any of it would be used as a base or that we would be committed to utilizing anything coming out of that workshop into the comp plan, but that it would just be another tool for voicing public, public input and concerns. And that's, as far as my understanding is, that's the extent of what this grant and this initiative is.
Do they have dates for the workshop?
No.
First, we have to, first we have to be awarded the grant.
Okay.
So this is, our letter of support shows the grant and people how many entities are supporting this moving forward. We may not get the grant.
And I, I was pretty clear when I was talking to them that they, that the whole term, the whole genre of the smart growth is not, you know, can stir up some kind of emotion response. And there's already some predisposed opinions of it where we don't want to go down to smart growth or, you know, the Agenda 21. There's certain buzzwords that sustainable development, these kinds of things that all we want to really focus on are those things that might just help facilitate public input from, from our standpoint. And frankly, from a county standpoint, this, this really is, a lot of it is geared more towards kind of city life and building those kinds of complete streets with trails and with things like this. Where we look at it from a county standpoint is perhaps when we're doing plan unit developments or some open space subdivisions, and we already do this portion of it where we talk with the applicants about connectivity with trail systems and the internal type planned roads or the planted roads or plan unit development roads and easements as it would facilitate this kind of, the things coming out of the GO team or the complete streets prospect there.
Here.
I guess there would be two things that, it's one that we're asking somebody to facilitate it because we feel we can't. I mean, that would be an assumption I would make. And the other is probably the more attractive is that we're going to get money to pay for this process. And that's back to my point of I would be concerned about money being an attractor that ends up eventually, maybe you don't like what the expectation is of the outcome as a result of those funds have been allocated. And I, I think that it's hugely important that what we envision and hope for, I think we have, we have skilled individuals and we can borrow the information that would help in forming process that we maintain control of, that doesn't put us in a situation in association where what they hope for and what we hope for might be contradictory to what we want as a community. And that's why as soon as I see we are affirming as a board that an application is made to smart growth, I am uncomfortable with that.
Chris, they're not facilitating. They're just doing a workshop. So if there's something in here that says facilitating, I'd like to take it out.
Where does the money come from?
Is it in Moran's email?
It is, it would be federal money. For this particular grant, it would be federal money. And they would, they would be kind of harnessing that, that workshop. Just a couple of points. Yeah, I agree in the fact that we need to have control of the outcome of any of the public opinion process that we would undertake. We kind of entered into this discussion through the larger discussion of the update of the Comprehensive Land Use Guide Plan. Can we facilitate something like that internally? Yes, we absolutely can, but it is going to be the recommendation of this committee, Land Use Committee that we have. It would be to solicit a consultant team or so to facilitate that process for us, not because we can't do it, but because it gives a more of the appearance of a kind of generalized, you know, non-agenda setting. If we were to be as the, as the planning and zoning, if we were to go ahead and facilitate the process, there's opinions out there that we would have an agenda that we just would want to drive through. But we had talked about getting just a local consultant from a planning, not one of the fed consultants or anything like that, to be able to facilitate the, the land use guide land, guide plan update process. This discussion is just a peripheral subset of that, that it would be my, and this is what I also relate again to Kristen and to Moran, is that my impression of the results coming out of this would just be at the very most that it would provide a list of topics that we would discuss when we were looking at updating our plan and/or if we are looking at having a discussion in the plan unit developments, just another thing as a part of our checklist, much like we have for, we did the alternative urban area wide review for Caribou Lake watersheds and for the Poplar River watersheds. Well, the result of those reviews ended up with a couple extra little bullet points when we're looking at development projects on there. Does this take into consideration this and this? Should we look at something like this? So it just facilitates in that process a little bit more of a discussion on that, not to determine what the end results of that discussion would be, but just so that it might be addressed. Like with the Poplar River, we want to look and make sure that we're not doing anything to the river that would increase the slumping prospect or this or that. So that is at least the goal from, from my standpoint is, is the planning department's purpose in this, in this particular project. If you don't do it, it won't break my heart. I mean, it's not life or death. We are going to come back and we are going to, as a land use guide plan committee, the consensus has been, yes, we need to update the land use guide plan. And if we, if we do that and we don't have any involvement in this and this doesn't go, we're still going to come and try to update the comprehensive land use plan. And we still would work with the GO team and with the complete streets, the local processes that we have going.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would, I would agree and I would encourage on all of the different things that you mentioned. We as a community should define who we want to be and how we, you know, want to be able to enjoy what we have by way of, you know, our physical land and our caretaking of that. And I think that sensitivities to how we, future development, you might as well be mindful, let's, let's make it safe streets and things like that. I would rather do that. I think we can find facilitators and people to do that and maintain integrity of processes so it doesn't seem like we're agenda driven. Let the community define who it wants to be. I just do, I would not want to open the door. And if the money and, well, will gain integrity because of the association from the standpoint of an outside person coming, I think we can protect those things. I don't know with the money issue, given our discussion this morning, it's, you know, it's, that's why I say it's very difficult not to want to take the money. But I am not comfortable at all opening any door in association with smart growth. I think we determined that and we're smart in how we do it, but we're also sensitive. It's the same statement that's made in our truth and taxation that says that the reason that local property taxes is something that has a benefit to it. It's defined being responsible and responsive to our citizens and aware of the community we live in. I don't want somebody from the outside telling me how I should live my life. And that might seem like in the context of, you know, those that sit on the committee and in our liaison, an overstatement, but I think we, I think we need to be mindful of the decisions that we're making in the broader context of what's the ripple effect in associations. And we have this discussion with a lot of boards that I sit on that have to do with rural counties and communities and the effects of what's happening with things that, oh my goodness, we'll wake up one day and say, I never intended that they'd be that, but we can't stop the momentum.
Okay. Well, they're on a timeline, which is too bad because we're missing one commissioner to vote on this. So do we want to go ahead and take a vote today? Or do we want to contact?
You have to, because you already made a vote to do it. So now you have to make the vote to not do it. So you have to call the vote. You have to call the, someone has to make the motion and we have to vote on it.
Well, if no one makes the motion, you just don't vote.
Well, then the letter goes through, doesn't it?
It.
We already agreed to provide the letter.
Did we?
Yeah, we did.
Chair, we need clarification, but we're making the assumption that we, we at the beginning on this, and my, my context in that regard would have been more in support of wanting, you know, with what the active living, living group is, you know, promoting, that I think having that internally and having that discussion here, I don't have a problem with that. As soon as I saw the letter with that on it, I'm opposed to that. I would make a motion that I would rescind my support for the motion to move forward to this in conjunction with smart growth as a facilitator. I am not against moving forward with what we hope for in our intention, but I would not want to do it in conjunction with smart growth. That would be my motion. My motion is to rescind the support.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Oh, it would be to rescind the motion from the previous meeting where, where you did approve going forward with this. Now that we have more information.
But the motion was to draft the letter of support, they have to be applicant or anything like that, correct?
Right.
Okay, we have a motion. Sir, second.
I'll second.
Just a comment, Madam Chair, and thank you, that the, to not be a part of an applicant or anything, I'm reviewing, they did put together an application that the deadline for this application is December 6. So this, this does hinge upon what you guys decide here. If you vote this out, then I just rip this up and go away.
But they can move forward with that application even without letter of support?
Well, no, because they wanted, they want the county, they, because of the whole structure in terms of who can do the grants and such, they wanted the county to be the entity doing the grant.
Well, that's a.
Yes.
The facilitator.
The facilitator of the grant. And that being the planning and zoning office. We did not initiate this. They came to us to do this. They came to me to sign on to this. And I would sign on to this only to the extent that the commissioners are in favor of it. If the commissioners are not in favor of it, I am not going to sign on to it.
Madam Chair, my, my position isn't, you know, process related to just go ahead without, plus, you know, for me, mine is, I do not want to move forward under my understanding of what we're proposing here. And so that my motion is, is to rescind our support for this, but not to discourage what we hope to do. I think there's another way of doing it. I just don't want the alliance.
Okay. Yep. Can we just clarify? I wasn't, I didn't really understand that you were doing a motion right that moment. So I was writing, but I didn't.
Sure, that's fine.
I just, I just wrote Gary was rescinding the motion.
I'm making a motion to rescind the board's support for moving forward in application for grant in having smart and facilitate this process.
Workshop.
Yeah, this workshop.
Got it. Thank you.
I second you.
Yes, got that. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Motion was being seconded. Any opposition opposed? Opposed what?
I'm opposed to this.
Oh, you're opposing.
She was rescinding that. She wants to follow through.
Oh, okay.
The motion is to rescind, which means if you support that, you're saying we won't follow through.
Oh, okay.
That's all right.
Okay, so we have one opposed. What are you going?
I'm ready to vote now, just a moment.
I'm calling for the vote.
Okay. Support?
Support.
Support.
Okay, so motion carried. Oh, you want discussion before that?
Yeah, there's one, you have to remind me, Brady, there's something, you know, maybe just the same day, about, you know, this protocol for rescinding motions, do you recall? maybe just the same day, about, you know, this protocol for rescinding motions, do you recall what those are?
No, I do not.
Me neither.
What do you remember?
I believe it has to be at the very next meeting. I believe you can rescind a motion that was done as long as within that very, very next meeting. But after the very next meeting, you can't.
Otherwise...
Otherwise, then you would have to vote to, to cancel it, or it wouldn't be a rescinding.
Well, then I don't think you can rescind.
I thought it was something about, yeah, I guess there is a meeting, a person who...
Which means it's...
...who voted against it can request, you know, the rescinding or something like that. Okay, it doesn't apply here, okay.
Well, it does, because it wasn't the last meeting.
It wasn't the last meeting.
No.
It was at least two meetings ago.
So now what do we do?
So that...
Take it to the administrator.
That's true, that motion is, was not valid, so...
So the last motion was not valid?
So what's our option? I mean, moving forward some that, you know, the majority of the board at least is not in agreement with.
We either need to talk to the attorney, or we need to find out if what the, if the administrator had an opinion on this?
I, I would think that because you hadn't seen the letter, is that, is that true, when, when you voted?
Yeah, the vote hinged on the letter.
Right, so you voted in principle to support the letter, and then now that you had seen the letter, you are opposed to that letter, so I would, I would presume that you wouldn't necessarily rescind because process-wise, you can't do that, but you would be able to vote to not send the letter and not support the grant.
Are you trying to get paid as an attorney now, or?
Yeah, I play one on...
Did we not have all the information at the last meeting that told us what we were applying for?
I don't know, I don't know if that language, if, if you understood, if Gary understood that that was an organization. I certainly didn't know the association with Smart Growth at that time.
Because just because we don't like the letter, we still agreed to file an application, which is due in three days.
It's not, it's not the letter, it's what it says, it's who we're doing this with.
Right, which is the application that we agreed to, so now...
But if, you know, but if some of you agree with the letter other than some of the terminology, you can change that.
Right. But how do we, how do we, okay, how do we now say we no longer agree with, with the motion to do the application?
If you just withdraw your support, I would think withdraw your support for the grant, because the letter is only an introductory letter for the grant application. So if you really just did not want to go through with the grant, you would withdraw commissioner's support for the grant.
I'll make a motion to that effect, if that's what we need to do, to do the process of interrogation. I made a motion to withdraw the grant. Support for the grant.
Do you amend, does it mention in your last one?
Okay, I accept that amendment.
So the new motion is?
The motion is to withdraw our support of the application for the grant to fund this workshop, with encouragement to find a different way.
I really feel bad about it, but I, I, I just think we should be more cautious on it. Okay, take the vote. Any further business? Any further discussion?
Gary, Gary just...
Who's the second?
Gary.
Yeah, Bruce?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any opposition?
Opposed.
And support?
Support.
Aye.
Support, so motion carries. Sorry.
It's all right.
Thank you for your work on that. Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, thanks for the clarity, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.